Today is Monday, May 1st. Welcome to the City Council Committee on City Services meeting. Just a quick announcement that this meeting is being audio and video recorded. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Councillor Foster.
Here.
Councillor Gore.
Here.
Councillor LaBarge.
Here.
And as we know, Councillor Perry is absent and excused.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Next up, item three, we have public comments. I do not see any members of the public here, so I think we're safe to move on, which brings us to item four. Laura, thanks so much for getting the minutes out. And it was in the afternoon, so Councillors LaBarge and Gore, I just wanted to check to see if you had a chance to to read through the minutes?
Yes, I read it.
Okay, great. All right, then we can have a motion to act on those.
Yes, I made a motion to approve the minutes.
All right. Okay, so motion made by Councillor LaBarge, seconded by Councillor Gore. We're not in person, we can't arm wrestle on it. Laura, would you call the roll on approval of the minutes of April 3rd?
Sure. Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Gore.
Yes.
And Councillor LaBarge.
Yes.
Okay. So that motion passes three to zero, and that brings us to item five, items referred to committee in this, item five A, items referred to committee. This is a whole slew of reappointments. I'm going to go ahead and read them, but then we can consider acting on them as a group. So the reappointments are for the Conservation Commission, Kevin Lake, for reappointment, to the Disability Commission, Kathy Murray, for reappointment, to the Housing Partnership, Edgardo Council, for reappointment, and Gordon Shaw, also reappointment, Hannah Schaefer, for reappointment, and Ace Taylor, for reappointment. To the Parks and Recreation Commission, we have Julia Siobhan, for reappointment, David Cronin, for reappointment, and to the Whiting Street Fund Committee, Joseph Musterka, for reappointment. Are there? Well, actually, never mind. So we do, we could either take them individually, or we could consider a motion to consider them as a group, if nobody needs.
Take them.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so motion to move them as a group made by Councillor LaBarge, seconded by Councillor Gore. And just before we do that, I just wanted to make sure that nobody needs to discuss any of those separately. Okay, I don't either. All right, so Laura, could you do a roll call, please, on the reappointments as a group?
Sure. Councillor Gore.
Yes.
Councillor LaBarge.
Yes.
And Councillor Foster.
Yes. Okay, so that passes three to zero, and that brings us up to item five B, which is appointments to various committees, which were referred to city services on April 13th, 2023. And first, to my fellow committee members, I just wanted to thank you for rolling with the very last minute request for assignment, so I apologize for my mistake there. The first person we had, the first appointment we have is for Angela Gregory, to the Energy and Sustainability Commission?
Yes.
Was that you, Councillor LaBarge?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great.
Thank you. I'll tell you, I'm very impressed with Angela Gregory. And I asked her some questions. The funniest thing is, I tried her Thursday. Thank God she emailed me. She was on the train on her way to DC for some training. So she said she'd be back later, probably Saturday evening. I said, take a break, we'll talk and do whatever we have to do on Sunday. But anyways, I'm going to do my best I can here, because I did ask her why she wanted to be on Energy and Sustainability Commission. Angela has dedicated over 20 years of her professional experience in the realm of sustainability. She has worked in various sectors with a sustainability focus from political lobby groups to grassroots community organizations, as well as within the academic and an operator and small business owner. She has been a resident of Northampton since 2008, and she has set out meaningful ways to connect with and support her community. She has participated regularly on the reuse committee, as well as the Bike and Pet Committee, and has created three public-facing communication materials for the city. One was a personal project that is now a city sanctioned document on the DPW's traffic comment site. Two others were translating the extensive planning documents of the Sustainability Northampton Comprehensive Plan and the Affordable and Attainable Housing Plan, and summarizing them in a media-rich format of thematic areas of public consumption. Angela has been deeply engaged in energy-related topics throughout her recent Masters in Sustainability Science, with a concentration in urban sustainability, as well as the past year as the Associate Director of the Energy Transition Institute at UMass Amherst, where she has been supporting research around energy justice. I also asked her about her expertise of what she could bring to the commission, and what possible changes would she like to see happen with the commission, if she thought it was needed, or any guidance on keeping in the right direction. She felt that her expertise would bring typically spans of energy efficiency as a residential and large building scale to understand how the energy system in Massachusetts functions. Within the theme of sustainability, she holds certificates of LEED Green Associates, as well as a certificate in climate hazard and green infrastructure planning, as well as a certificate in prebioculture design and nature-based solutions. She is very connected to working with professionals, as well as academics and very large arena of sustainability and energy, and has a strong understanding of the resource and legislative landscape in Massachusetts. She also brings emergent research knowledge from the academic realm and the field of energy, where policy, energy market economics, and community perception and adoption of residential ratepayer programs meet. She also knows how to get things done, this I do believe. I have extensive experience with initiative building and implementation and translation of information from technical material to general audiences, and am comfortable communicating with the public around the topics of sustainability and energy. Angela feels, as a new member of the commission, she would first start by seeking to understand the commission's trajectory and what city policy is guiding that vision, as well as what the main priorities of the commission are for the next few years. She would work to gather additional information or resources, knowledge or social, to help inform the process in addition to what knowledge and experience she has, and provide guidance through strategy and recommendations. She believes that she can bring an informed perspective that is current, as well, excuse me, as willingness to work on behalf of the city and in cooperation with others, to find the best path forward and to get the work done. I asked her how important it was to work together as a commission. She felt it is important that the commission has a strong foundation of mutual respect and effective and productive means of communication, as well as a method for project management. She understands that this is to be a working commission and beyond the scaffolding of the policy or legislation for it to function effectively. She imagines that each commissioner will provide time outside of meetings to advance the needs of the commission. I believe it is important to have transparency and accountability across the commission as it relates to the work of the commission. And I am to create a positive rapport with my peers as we work together to meet our priorities. She states, "I look forward to serving on this commission and hope that we can provide concrete and actionable outcomes to address climate action for our city." Now, that was that. And I would like to make a motion with a positive recommendation for Angela Gregory to be appointed on the Energy and Sustainability Commission to the full city council.
Thank you, Councillor LaBarge, and Councillor Gore, it's a little awkward tonight with me chairing. Oh, you can't unmute. Laura, can you make her a co-host?
I will second that.
Thank you, the long-awaited second. Okay, motion made by Councillor LaBarge for a positive recommendation, seconded by Councillor Gore. Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, then Laura, can you do a roll call, please?
Councillor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
And Councillor Gore.
Yes.
Okay. Positive recommendation, that passes three to zero, and that brings us up to Eric Winkler of 105 Pine Street, Florence, also for the Energy and Sustainability Commission.
Yes, I got a chance to talk with him. So he put a lot in his application, actually. He does a PhD in environmental chemistry and soil science, and years of experience in water and groundwater and wastewater tech. He's lived in Northampton since 1987. He spent three decades in energy and environment. He did small-scale wastewater management, and in the 2000s, he transferred to Energy for Regional Power Systems and working at UMass. And now he does energy consulting. He also was on the board for a $3 billion Energy Efficiency Project. He has 11 years of working as a professor at UMass. He's retired now, and he wants to give back to the community. He worked with Wayne Biden on wastewater, and he has a long history with Wayne, and Wayne suggested it might be of interest for him to join the Energy and Sustainability Commission. He applied, and then the position was filled. But then a position came open again, got a call from the mayor's office, and they made him aware their position was open again, and he applied again. He has the time and the experience to dedicate to this commission. Most of his life, he's been working on sustainability, and he has a very detailed knowledge of the power grid. One thing that he would like to learn more about, or once he's on the commission, is the Sustainable Northampton Plan. He wants to focus on regeneration. He's interested in community choice aggregation. He worked on community choice aggregation in California. He wants to learn what's being done, because we're trying to be net zero in seven years. He said that's not a long time, and and he wants to be able to move things forward in the commission. He believes in educating the public on the power grid, because it's complicated. He explained, he tried to explain a little bit to me. And changing infrastructure, he said, is difficult, and trying to find the equity in that is what he wants to focus on. He's saying that, you know, energy is not going to be cheaper as we go into, you know, trying to be more sustainable, and he wants to talk to people about the economics of climate change and power generation. And he says power generation will never be less expensive, so he wants to be able to educate the public on that. So yeah. And I would move to positively recommend him to the Energy and Sustainability Commission.
Second.
Okay, so motion made by Councillor Gore, seconded by Councillor LaBarge for a positive recommendation. And is there any discussion on this motion? Thanks, Councillor Gore. Laura, would you do a roll call, please?
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Gore.
Yes.
And Councillor LaBarge.
Yes.
Okay, so that motion passes three to zero, and that brings us up to the appointment of Richard Parish to the Urban Forestry Commission. And Councillor Perry sends his apologies. He's sick and cannot make the meeting tonight. He was able to give me just a real quick overview that he had talked with Richard Parish, who's been volunteering, actually, with Tree Northampton for years, and is ready to help with the urban tree landscape even more by serving on the Urban Forestry Commission. But he's been involved for quite a while, and so Councillor Perry felt good about making a positive recommendation for the appointment of Richard Parish. So I guess, as the chair, I can't make that recommendation, but that's Councillor Perry's suggestion, and either of you could make a motion.
I made a motion.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councillor LaBarge, seconded by Councillor Gore. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, Laura, would you do a roll call, please?
Councillor Gore.
Yes.
Councillor LaBarge.
Yes.
And Councillor Foster.
Yes. So that motion passes three to zero, and that brings us up to the appointment of Sherri Taylor to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I spoke with Sherri Taylor this morning, actually, and we had a great conversation. She's lived in Northampton since 2007. She actually owns a number of rental properties, and so while she's never been to the Zoning Board of Appeals herself for her property, she's familiar with the process, and and her real interest kind of in zoning and planning was piqued years ago when she was not able to build a garage on her property, because it was too close to the property line. And that's sort of where she dug into some of the matters of zoning and how that works. She's been asked to serve by another member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and has been open to serving for several years and was just waiting for a vacancy. And there is a vacancy now, and she's ready to step forward. And, you know, she's just loves Northampton and looking forward to volunteering in a capacity that can further, you know, further the city, so that's her real interest. With that, I would make a positive recommendation. And, yeah.
Second.
Okay, so we'll say I made the motion, a motion made by me and seconded by Councillor Gore. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, Laura, can we have a roll call, please?
Councillor Gore.
Yes.
Councillor LaBarge.
Yes.
And Councillor Foster.
Yes. Okay, so that also passes unanimously, which brings us up to item six, new business. I have two things, but wanted to first open it up. Councillor LaBarge or Councillor Gore, if you had any new business you wanted to bring up tonight?
There was, we had been assigned a couple of meetings back to look into, like, public places where, like, a city council meeting could be viewed.
Yes. That slipped off my radar. I've been tracking it for all of these meetings, and now it's gone. Should we add that back on for our June meeting?
Sure, we could.
Would you like to do that, or with the? It's, I remember now, it slightly slipped off my radar, as.
I don't know if everybody remembers what they were assigned. I don't know. You know, it's been a while.
I do have those notes, but I remember now, it sort of became, felt a little less relevant as council opted to continue meeting hybrid, rather than to meet, we were thinking that we may revert to remote, or weren't sure, but with council meeting, husband-meeting hybrid, then the public has the in-person option at council chambers. So maybe the discussion is if we want to revisit that discussion.
Yeah.
Okay. What do you think? Do you want, because Councillor LaBarge, I think this was at a time that you weren't able to take an assignment, so it was Councillor Perry and Councillor Gore and I were we're going to look into other remote participation options for residents when we weren't thinking that council chambers, council chambers was an option. Do we want to continue pursuing that, or do we want to kind of hold on to that while council makes decisions about where and how we'll be meeting moving forward?
Yes, I would like to wait on that.
How's that sound to you, Councillor Gore?
That sounds good.
Okay. So we have our assignments, we have the discussion in the back of our minds, and we'll revisit when it feels needed? Okay. Councillor LaBarge?
Yes, I know one thing, I did bring it up at city council way back about JFK. They have excellent parking there for all residents to park. Okay, and I think you've heard me mention this. And it's brighter in there, the lighting is better, but it's the park, and we have many residents in the rural areas who do not want to come down by Main Street. And especially during the evenings, they're very, feel unsafe about it. So that was one thing I had mentioned. Way back, many of us councillors talked about this. And nothing was never done about it, but we also talked about a rotating basis, some in Northampton and some up at JFK. So that is another big concern here, is the parking and coming out of the meetings late and so forth.
That may be a council president discussion for the full council meetings. For our committee meetings, we have options, and that was actually something I was going to ask you all. We've been sort of just meeting remotely, because that's what we've been doing. And so I did want to ask as a committee how we want to continue, and I'm fine with going month by month, or if we want to have a broader discussion about how we'd like to meet as a committee?
Yeah, I would like a broader discussion on that, because right now, through the State House, we can stay at remote, if we all decide on that. So I would like us to look at this further.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we can look at it further.
Okay, so should we? We have been meeting remotely, so why don't we plan to meet remotely in June? But let's put it as an agenda item to discuss how we'd like to do it moving forward. Does that work?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so Laura, can you make a note of putting it on the agenda for the discussion of meeting format moving forward for the June agenda?
Sure.
Okay. And then two other things. Councillor Gore, you had brought up some interest from residents in sort of, we had the great update from the Department, the Division of Community Care last month, but then a sort of broader update about, you know, progress that's being made on some of the other recommendations of the Policing Review Commission report, and I realized I did reach out to the mayor's office. I didn't hear back, and then haven't followed up yet, so I will follow up on that, because that's a discussion that I think would be of broad interest, so I'll follow up on that, see if we can do that. And Councillor LaBarge, I think I know what you're going to say, and I have an update for you. But I might, I might not, why don't you go ahead, and we'll see.
Why don't you tell me what you're thinking?
We're on the same page. I talked to Director Lascalia from DPW on Friday, is that it?
Yep.
Okay. She, you know, she's, of course, willing to come and talk to us. She doesn't feel like she's got a ton of information that she hasn't shared in council, and could either share with the full council during the budget discussions, or could come meet with us separate, depending on the committee's preference. DPW currently has 19 vacancies. It's sort of a systemic.
You have what councillor?
19 vacancies.
Still have vacancies?
Yes. It is, it's a broader issue that many city departments are dealing with, but some of the the jobs, you know, the vacancies DPW is dealing with are ones that are very industry-wide of drivers with CDLs and some of the heavy equipment operators. You know, she's doing her very best to advertise as broadly as possible and to bring people in, but some, because that job market is so competitive, people are often able to leave for higher-paying work. What she's been doing to keep the business of the city going is using contractors as needed for really time-sensitive work, things that can't wait. So it's definitely, it's a challenge for DPW, but just to put it in the broader context.
Councillor, I got a call coming in from Mass General.
Okay. Put you on mute, and we'll return. It's okay. Um. Okay, but there's my DPW update.
Okay.
And I do want to pause, if we can, for a moment, to give Councillor LaBarge a chance to state her her preference. Actually, we may have dropped below a quorum anyway, so we might. Why don't we recess until Councillor LaBarge is able to come back on? So don't go far, but if you want to take a five-minute break, go for it. Okay. Councillor LaBarge, we just took a recess so that, to give you time. Okay.
Thank you, Karen.
Yeah, you're welcome. Um, welcome back. So I had just finished, but wanted to give you a chance to to respond.
You know, and another thing too, Councillor Foster. Stop and think, how many people actually attend city service? It's really going to be something big. And then we're looking at coming, like we did today. Nobody out there coming in or participating, right? We've had this problem for a long time, a long time on city service. And it's like, here, we're traveling out in the rural areas to come down for a meeting for an hour, and then coming back. You're looking at amount of gas being taken and just leaving our cars down there and coming to a meeting for an hour.
Are you?
That's my feelings toward it.
Oh, yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll discuss our meeting format in June, absolutely. And so, yeah, we have the option to continue meeting remotely. Just wanted to have an official committee discussion about it. And then you got my, my update on DPW. Does that feel like enough, or Director Lascalia discussing during the city council budget hearings, or do you want to invite her in?
Okay, I have to say, I've talked with Donna myself, and that I told Donna, one of my residents on Cardinal Way is also an assistant director in another city, okay, here, locally. Same problem. They cannot get positions filled. And Donna told me how she even went and raised the scale of their money. What is going on?
I believe it's an industry, it's an industry-wide challenge.
Oh, Karen.
Yeah.
No, I don't think we need to bring her in, because that's awful. It's awful. No, I don't think we need to bring her in, because that's awful. It's awful.
Okay, yeah, I did want to get you that information and be sure we had that option. Okay. So just to make sure we've put a bow on it, I'm going to reach back out to the mayor's office regarding a broader update on the Policing Review Commission. And Laura, we're going to put an update from the mayor's office about progress that's been made toward the Policing Review Commission's report. And then Laura, in June, we'll also discuss meeting format, and I promise committee members will have more notice on appointment assignments for our next meeting as well.
That's good.
Is there, is there any other, is there any further business? Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second it.
Okay, motion to adjourn made by Counselor Gore, seconded by Counselor LaBarge. Laura, roll call, please?
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
And Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes three to zero. We are adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone.